I'll call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Want to welcome everyone who's come out tonight in attendance here and also those that are watching the meeting on G-10 television. We're going to start the meeting out by having our pledge of allegiance and I think Mayor Potem Lizarra, you're going to take care of that tonight. And then we'll have our invocation by John Carter, our city attorney. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day. Thanks for the blessings and benefits that you so graciously bestow upon us individually and collectively as the city of Jacksonville. We pray for peace, peace in our world, peace in our nation, and for us to have peace individually. We pray that the barriers that divide us will be broken down and that we will work to identify our common humanity and try to understand the love that you have for us and to show that love to one another, grant us peace. We pray for our men and women who are serving us here and around the world, for their anxious families, be with them. And as always, give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, you have a copy, we got a copy of tonight's agenda for the meeting and we're going to add, I need to get a motion to adopt the agenda but with certain additions. One being the NC DOT agreement reimbursement to the consent agenda item, or consent agenda.
I move approval with the addition.
Any discussion here, not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have a presentation to make tonight and I'm going to come around front here. It's with a great deal of pleasure tonight to, we're going to do some promotions in the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. And I would like to ask Chief Mike Canaro, Public Safety Director, and Chief Jerry Hardison, Fire Chief at Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services, to join me up front. This time I'd like to call up Sean Kistner and Thomas Shyber. Okay, so who you want to do first?
Sean.
Sean.
Please.
Tommy, named after you of course Tommy, but Sean Kistner is a native of Jacksonville and a graduate of White Oak High School. He began his career in the fire service in April of 2007 as a volunteer firefighter with the Pumpkin Center Volunteer Fire Department. He joined Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services in January of 2010. Sean holds certifications as firefighter two, EMT basic, fire officer two, fire instructor two, technical rescuer, fire and life safety educator, and fire inspector one. He holds a BS degree in Fire and Emergency Services Administration from Fayetteville State University. He is currently completing his MBA at Columbia Southern. Sean's family is here with us tonight and they're going to assist with this ceremony here. So without any further ado, what we're going to do is swear you into this position. How's that? So if you will please repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Sean Kistner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant
That I will be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties
In performing my duties.
As a captain
As a captain.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter
In any matter.
On account of personal bias
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice
Or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a captain
As a captain.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skill
According to the best of my skill.
Ability, abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God. Now's your chance to get even. Persons with cameras, feel free to come up so you can get better shots. Alright, we're not done yet. You got to finish, you got to finish decoration.
Here's the shot over here. Stand right here, you get a real good shot. Move on over, you're not in my way.
There's a couple of these little things right here. There you go, one more. Couple of the pins. Very good. Well, it's official now. Next I'd like to have Thomas Shyber join me up front here. Thomas has been promoted from driver operator two to captain. Thomas Shyber grew up in Jacksonville graduating from Southwest High School. He began his career in the fire service with the Surce City Fire Department in 1991. He joined the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services in March of 2004. Thomas holds certifications as firefighter two, EMT basic, inspector one, fire instructor two, fire officer two, and driver operator of pumps and arials. He has earned, has earned the first supervisor certificate from Coastal Carolina Community College. And his family's here with him tonight to help him with this journey, help get him sworn in. So if you would place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand for me, Thomas, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Thomas Shyber.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant
That I will be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties
In performing my duties.
As a captain
As a captain.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire Emergency Services.
City of Jacksonville Fire Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter
In any matter.
On account of personal bias
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice
Or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Laws and Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge and execute
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
As a captain
As a captain.
Of the City of Jacksonville
Of the City of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment.
According to the best of skills and judgment.
Close enough. So help me God.
So help me God.
Didn't know you were going to have to recite something, did you? Anybody with cameras, feel free to come up to get a good shot. Feel free to come on. I don't know. It was so with that white shirt too. It'll be fine. Alright. Who wants to do this? You can come on up here and take pictures all you want. Get whatever angle you need. Good job. Thomas can.
Good evening, everyone. The National League of Cities recently named six city winners in the 2018 Cultural Diversity Awards. Designated to promote and reward inclusive policies in nations, cities, towns, and villages, the awards program recognized communities that developed innovative ways of supporting diversity. Cities across America celebrating and supporting diversity and inclusion in innovative ways, said National League of Cities President Mark Stradola, mayor of Little Rock, Arkansas. NLC is proud to honor six communities as pioneers that have demonstrated initiative, resourcefulness, and inclusive value in approaching their governance of cultural diversity. In 1985, the National League of Cities, in partnership with the National Black Caucus Local of Elected Officials, established the City Cultural Diversity Awards as a means of demonstrating quality and innovative in relationships to many aspects of cultural diversity. The Cultural Diversity Award Program showcases examples of how cities achieve excellence in diversity. It also promotes a positive results and total community collaboration. This award is given to honor community leadership in developing creative and effective programs to improve cultural diversity. And each program is instructed to ensure that its staff is as diverse and exemplify diversity as well as its communities. The winners were announced at the Congressional City Conference in Washington DC on Monday, March the 12th, where 3,000 city leaders and delegates from across the United States met to advocate for their communities to discuss solutions for their cities. In conjunction with the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, the program is also cosponsored by the Asian Pacific American Municipal Officials, Hispanic elected officials, lesbian, gays, bisexual, transgender, local officials, and women in municipal government. Selections of the winners were based on the promotion of inclusive policies on race equity and leadership at the national and local level. City of Jacksonville, I am proud to present that for mid-sized cities for 5,001 to 2,000 populations, the City of Jacksonville took second place for the Cultural Diversity Award awarded by the National League of Cities. And, oops, they're passing around the award as we speak. No, no, you can have it. Come on up, Mayor.
I'm going to give it to you. I'm going to give it back to you because I can't hold it for too long because it's so heavy.
I do believe, if my memory serves me correct, Dr. Woodruff, this is our first Cultural Diversity Award that we have received from the National League of Cities. But this is our second award that we have received from the National League of Cities. Because I think two years or three years ago, Mr. Willingham brought back the award for recreation. We, so this is like our second award from the National League of Cities. So it's a big to-do in Washington DC for us. So thank you on behalf of Mayor and Jacksonville City Council, to the mayor and his initiative to Dr. Woodruff and the staff here at Jacksonville. We thank you so very much for entering us to the, into the contest. And as you can see, we are second place, but that leaves room for improvement next year to reapply to bring home number one. So thank you for letting me represent you.
Thank you, thank you. I can't begin to tell you how happy I am to have gotten the news of winning this award. And this is for the, all the cities in the United States.
Yes.
Make sure we clear that up, not just cities our size, but all cities. We started out our program here and I have, I have with me tonight, I have some of my team, or not my team, our team here with us tonight. I have Pastor Chris Phillips, Pastor Rod Streveling, Brenda Vega, Pastor Brenda Vega. Bishop.
Will Smith.
No. I know who she is. Bishop Will Smith, Reverend Will Jones, and Lily, who, she's with me. She's with the City of Jacksonville, but she's done a lot of hard work in trying to coordinate everything. But the whole idea, let me get back to the microphone so I don't get scolded by Glenn. The whole idea behind what we did here with this committee was not to win an award, this was collateral. But the thing is, we made Jacksonville a better place by getting together, having dialogue. And we continue to have dialogue and just to understand different perspectives from different people all through our city. We're, we're very fortunate here to have such a broad, such a broad diversity of people. That's something we can be proud of too as a city. But we will wear this well. We're going to put it somewhere. I think what we ought to do is share it. Go to the different churches. And anyway, I want to commend these, these folks behind me here. They did a lot of work. They're very faithful. They're God fearing, ladies and gentlemen. And if every city had people is willing to step up as these people have been, everybody would be a heck of a lot better off. But thank you all very much. Well, someone's got to take this thing. I'm going to put it over here then. Alright, next. I need some help. I need some help with the next one.
Absolutely.
How about him?
I think he's a good one.
Perfect. You're closest to him. Come on up. This is John Carter. He's our city attorney. He really earns his paycheck around here, I tell you that. I'm very proud tonight.
Speech.
I have a speech. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize a milestone of longevity service. John Carter has served as our full-time attorney for the past 15 years here in the City of Jacksonville. But in reality, John has actually provided legal advice and service to the city for more than 36 years. He's just been paid more for, or paid for here the last 15, well, you were paid for it then too. Beginning in 1982, John filled in from time to time for this, then a city attorney, Marshall Dotson. Mr. Carter was then appointed acting city attorney in 1997. And when Mr. Dotson retired in 1998, the council unanimously decided they needed a full-time. We had got, got to the point where we needed a full-time attorney. And Mr. Carter was unanimously, unanimously appointed by the council to that position. In late 2002, the council realized the city had grown to the point, okay, so we hired him in 2003. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, full-time, full-time in 2003. So during this time with the city, Mr. Carter has had a hand in assisting the city council with virtually every project, every initiative, every purchase, and every, it's going to be a surprise on the next page here, every improvement the city has undertaken, working diligently to ensure that we were always on sound legal footing and giving expert legal advice, which he does. The council and I thank him for his past and continued dedication to the city and the council, to his fellow staff and to the citizens. The council and I are pleased to present him with his 15-year longevity pin tonight and his certificate. But one thing I want to say about, one more thing I want to say about John is John is respected, highly respected in the legal community. He is well-known amongst all the different city and county attorneys in the state. So he's got a good network out there. He works a lot with the legal municipalities, legal staff and everything. So he keeps us, like I said, on good legal footing, which when you're a city, you kind of want to do that, you know? You don't, you know, you want to do things right. We try to do things right. But John, it's, you know, the two years I've been on council and the, over 10 years I've been mayor, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you. As you know, you probably already know that.
I appreciate it.
I thank you very much for your service and I want you to have, get a different pin there.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Give you a speech? You don't want to speak? You already did a prayer, so that's good enough. Sincerely, John, you're, you're a great attorney. You do a wonderful job for us and we're very proud to have you on staff. So now we're going to come to our first section of public comment for the evening. And I don't think anyone signed the sheet, but I know some people have came in since the time it was taken up. Is there anyone here wishes to speak at this section of public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we're going to go to the next item here. And this is the adoption of the minutes and the consent items. So I would entertain a motion at this time. We have minutes for the March 6, 2018 workshop meeting. We have minutes for the March 6, 2018 workshop meeting.
Move the adoption of the minutes and the consent items as listed.
Second.
Any discussion here? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So right now, I'm gonna take a real quick timeout. I know some of you came strictly for the presentations. This is the time during the meeting where you can flee, if you wish to. Okay, so let's go ahead and proceed. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. We have, first off, we have a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment. This was requested by staff, and Ryan will be taking care of this one.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Item number seven tonight is a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment specifically for the downtown residential district. It basically is a two-part amendment, one pertaining to the downtown district itself and also Article IV with the use table. And the primary reason for the change to begin with is to bring this section in alignment with the Norcal General Statute 168, 381, similar to what we did back in November with the single-family design standards. There were some single-family design standards that remained in our downtown district. We want to tweak that now from being shall or required to encouraged. We cannot mandate it any longer. We haven't been mandating it for quite some time now, so this just kind of cleans up that requirement language. The second thing that we'll do included a review of our use table based on the last decade of development in the downtown district. So, as I stated, revisions to the Article III, the downtown district, the purpose statement, the character statement, we wanted to keep it for guidance in case somebody wanted to build a house in downtown, and they wanted to know what program the previous standards were underneath, it's still gonna be in there for that guidance standpoint, and also that if the general statute ever goes back that allows the cities and towns to regulate design standards, it would be an easy transition back if the city wanted to do so. The other thing that we are proposing is eliminating certain multifamily and commercial uses from the use table, so we've also eliminated references to multifamily throughout the district as well as the commercial. So the primary use table revisions is moving multifamily from permitted or special uses to prohibited, and we've also eliminated some of the commercial uses. Council may recall that back in the day, it was the residential downtown three district. We had a funeral home, we had other commercial-type businesses, and over the past decade, we've seen a transition more to single-family type development, and in light of, or in line of the 2007 plan, which is the latest downtown plan, we wanted to make sure that we eliminated items that could cause incompatible development next door to recent developments. So new single-family house, you don't want a commercial use being built next door, or a multifamily development next door, so since we've seen the single-family develop more so than the townhouses and the multifamily, we are proposing to eliminate those standards. This went before the planning board at their most recent meeting, and they recommended unanimously to approve, as staff is recommending, which is to amend the Unified Development Ordinance accordingly, and that can be found under Attachment A attached with this agenda item. You happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time?
Yes.
Questions, Mr. King? Thank you.
Mayor, let me ask a question.
I'm sorry.
Ryan, would that include churches in this as commercial?
No, sir.
Okay.
I believe, let me just, to confirm, if we go to Attachment, let's see, go to Attachment A, I believe there's plenty of churches in the downtown area, and I don't believe we were proposing to make any changes to that, because we do not want to create any nonconforming situations, and underneath religious institutions, which, let's see, on your agenda, page, let's see, 15 at the very bottom, downtown residential, they will remain a special-use permit. So churches would still require a special-use permit, no changes to that land use in that district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ryan. At this time, we're gonna recess the regular council meeting and open up the required public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter? If so, please indicate by raising your hand. See no hands, so we're gonna close the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting. Council will be asked to approve the UDO text amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I move to recommend approval of the UDO text amendment found in Attachment A as recommended.
Second. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have a agenda item number eight. This is also a text amendment, UDO. This is dealing with kennels.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, Agenda Item Eight is a UDO text amendment requested by Tar Heel Building Systems. Their request was to modify the current definition of indoor and outdoor kennel to remove the 21-animal cap. Staff took this as an opportunity to evaluate our animal care use category of the UDO and recommend some changes additional to their requested amendment. Along with their requested amendment, staff is introducing three new uses to the UDO, animal grooming, animal crematorium, and animal shelter. We are also proposing to modify the kennel use from kennel indoor or outdoor to two separate definitions of kennel indoor, kennel outdoor. We revised the standards for animal care uses. We've added language for veterinary clinics that we amended the UDO many years ago, and we have also added some stipulations for animal crematorium in the use standards. We've added definitions for animal grooming, animal boarding, and animal crematorium, and again amended the kennel definition to remove the 21-animal cap for both outdoor and indoor. One of the highlighted changes to the use category, use standards, I'm sorry, for kennel outdoor, is we've proposed to change the separation from property boundaries when it's boarding or residential use from 30 feet to 50 feet and require a Type A buffer. Representatives from Tar Heel Building Systems are in attendance, and along with staff would be happy to answer any questions. Last week at their meeting, the Planning Advisor Board with staff are both recommending approval of this amendment.
Ask any questions?
Was this prompted by new construction or revision?
We did have some inquiry from a potential new project, and they saw that the 21-animal cap could limit what they wanted to do, so staff steered them in the direction of an amendment, and this would actually benefit three existing sites in the city where they are currently nonconforming because they house or order or board more than the 21-cap. So removing this would bring them into compliance with the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone wishes to speak? If anybody wishes to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Seeing no one, we're closing the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting. Council, you're being asked to consider the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment and the text amendment found in Attachment A.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the UDO text amendment found in Attachment A.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does this apply only to boarding animals?
Did you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Does this apply only to boarding animals?
This would affect any, yeah, it would affect any use that was.
Or a grooming place?
That's right. That's correct. It's an assumed accessory use to kennel and boarding operations, and they may do all those things that a animal care facility do, grooming or daycare, but this would affect animal kennels indoor or outdoor.
So it has no application to residential, number of dogs you could have or?
The only change we did, we did put in a proposed special use for the RSF-40 for large, for the large residential uses where they may actually have a kennel operation, but they would be required to go through a special-use process. But no, this does not affect our current regulation of excessive animals in the residential uses. Right now, we already cap it. Basically, the, if you have more than four animals, you're, you get kicked into the kennel classification by definition.
More than four?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to Agenda Item Number Nine on tonight's meeting, and this is a nonconsent item, and this is on the MOA for mental health, Dick's Crisis Center. Dr. Woodruff will be presenting this item.
Mayor, members of council, as you'll recall, February of 2017, we held a joint workshop with the County Commission. During that workshop, one of the items that was discussed was the issue of mental health and substance abuse. A task force was appointed of two county commissioner members, those were Commissioner Price and Commissioner Knapp, and two city council members, Mr. Lozera and Mr. Thomas. Over the last year and a half, that group has worked to analyze the issue. Chief Yanara and other staff members from the county and the city have also worked with that task force. From that work, it was determined that we needed a local facility that could address on a short-term basis, mental health and substance abuse. The state contracts through Trillium to provide mental health services for about 24 of the counties. The state is actually broken up into regions, and Trillium has the contract for basically the eastern portion of the state. There are no treatment facilities in this area. What we have in this area are currently emergency response teams, if I may use that term, but we do not have any facilities that are through the state or the federal government. We have only facilities that if you have private insurance, for example, like Brenmar, and you have a mental health or substance abuse issue, then you certainly could go to a private facility. The task force felt that to create a bed facility for short-term stay, short-term meaning up to seven days, was essential for us to address this issue in our community. In the discussions early on, Onslow Memorial Hospital joined those discussions, and as time went on, we had interest from Carteret County and most recently from Craven County. The question has been raised, if we only have 16 beds, should we be letting the other counties join? And the answer is absolutely for this reason. The state has the contract with Trillium, and Trillium has what's called a catchment area. That's a service area. That service area includes Carteret and Craven County, and of course, Jones County and Onslow County. So any person in any of that catchment area who needs these services, if they're Medicaid eligible, they can come to that facility. So when Carteret County and Craven County asked to join in helping fund it, that was a logical thing, because if we have to serve those residents anyway, why not let those counties, especially if they were willing to financially contribute? As we know, Senator Harry Brown was instrumental in receiving a $2 million grant through the state budget, through the Dorothy Dick's Foundation, to actually rehab a facility that the county government has had for a number of years over off a memorial close to the hospital. Recently, the county received bids for that work, and the bids came in at well within budget, so the County Commission shortly will be authorizing the contractor to proceed with upfitting and modernizing that facility. The nice thing is, the money that the senator was able to get relieved our community and the other communities from having to fund that multimillion-dollar rehab of the building. The memorandum of agreement, which is before you this evening, was actually signed by you as the first party back in November or December of 17. But when you signed it, it did not include Craven County. So tonight, you're actually redoing what you did first. You're making your pledge that says that during FY '19, that's next fiscal year, and FY '20, that you will budget $100,000 each of those two years to help offset the cost of operating this facility. So again, this evening, we're asking you to authorize the mayor to sign this memorandum of agreement. I would also yield to the two council members who served on that task force for further discussion and comments. Gentlemen?
Randy?
Just want to say, it's been a long, I can't believe it's been a year already that we've been working on this, because thankfully, Harry brought that money to the table. It did provide a lot, opportunity to enhance the facility a great deal, although it added a lot of time, turnaround time to getting it started, which I guess we're hoping for August, September, probably October now. But everybody's on board, they're excited about the potential for this. I mean, basically, what's been happening in the past, we've had to, I won't say treat these individuals, but to do what we can with them to help them, but we're not really using professional help. So this will give us opportunity to put professionals in charge and hopefully have a more positive outcome. Mike?
Thank you. It's just, it's been a, I'm like you, Randy, I can't believe it's been that long, but it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the committee, and we've made some, what I call significant progress, and I think we're a model for the state, or we will be a model for the state in finding solution to a local need, and this will be one of the, the first of probably many in the future in other communities as a model, model agent, a model collaborative effort within a community to help solve, or at least help a crisis that a community may have, and the opioid crisis is indeed affecting a lot of lives, and if we can help one, we've done our job. So. So I'm honored and privileged to be part of it.
Mayor, I would point out, as the city attorney just pointed out to me, there are actually three actions we're asking you to take. The first action is to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement. The second is to direct the staff to put the $100,000 in your draft budget. And the third is to appoint one person to the advisory committee. Let's talk about that a moment. You've been very fortunate to have two dedicated council members work on the task force. But as the partnership has expanded, it was brought to our attention that the county commissioners especially have a lot of committee assignments and other responsibilities. And to ask each county to appoint two county commissioners, they felt was excessive. So the committee, the task force rather, they agreed that you would now limit the formal advisory group to one council member. So three actions before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wood. All right, so you've heard the action that's being requested here. First off, we'll start with the agreement. You going to take care of it?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the MOA and direct that 100,000 be included in the FY '19 budget and appoint Michael Lozaro to the advisory committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion, second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to say thanks again to our outstanding manager. I think he's done a fantastic job leading this effort, or at least doing a lot of the coordination, that note-taking, secretary, documentation of moving this process forward.
It's a good narrative.
And yeah, the chief, obviously.
Good job by quite a few people that were involved in that whole process.
I'd just like to point out that the, one of the items we're approving is a $100,000 contribution to the, to the operation of the facility. Is that not correct?
Yes.
To me, that's not only justified in terms of dealing with the opioid crisis that we have in this community and in the county, and in the state for that matter, but it's also necessary to say that this facility will ease the burden on our police department, which spends hundreds, if not thousands, of man-hours dealing with this problem in terms of finding accommodations for these people to be treated. So that's a major point of consideration in terms of justifying that expenditure.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Good deal. Lot of hard work. All right. This brings us to our section of the meeting where we're going to do our reports, and I'm going to start with Mr. Warden down there on the far left.
Proud to be here, Mayor, and report.
Proud to have you. Mr. Thomas?
I would just like to acknowledge a couple of impending retirements. I'm going to certainly miss Pete Dever at the water sewer advisory meetings, and I guess I need to delete Johnny Stiltner's number from my telephone, too, for all my street issues and potholes, but they've both done a great job, I feel like, and Johnny's been here a long time, and Pete's made a tremendous impact in his eight and a half years. Lastly, I did see something I've never seen before the other day. I was driving through town, and I saw a fire truck with a temporary tag on the back of it, and it was certainly an attractive vehicle. And if, if there ever fire in my neighborhood, I think it's the one to come, because it can move, too. It was driving pretty good.
It was dark.
It was dark, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Guess I had, I presented a proclamation for, to Washington Chapel Missionary Baptist Church and the Mary's Sted for Black History Month, based on their program, they had a cultural program there. And also, I have to say, I enjoyed the opportunity to go to the training at the National League of Cities, where we won the award, the diversity award. And this, this was a great opportunity. I joined the Military Communities Council, Mayor Pro Tem Lozaro, and looking forward to move in the, in the future, based on all the information that you get from interacting with other people from around the country.
Yes, last week, the, on loss of board of directors, of which I'm the council's representative, along with Mayor Pro Tem Lozaro, we had a five-hour planning session and along with a regular meeting to discuss strategic planning and system development fees, which is a relatively new issue that was, is required of the city in terms of, in lieu of impact fees, which was a standard of assessing new developments, a cost for perhaps furnishing new facilities, pump stations, whatever, in providing water and sewer utilities to new developments. Sometimes that was done in an arbitrary fashion, not so with the city, but in other places throughout the state. They were leading the Supreme Court to rule that the impact fees per se were not valid and requiring system development fees, which must be based on a minimum 10-year capital improvement program up to a maximum of 20 years. In other words, your improvements have to be spelled out and included in your capital improvement program, and a cost assigned to those, to apportion what development fees are applicable to those developments. And part of the strategic planning process we went through, through Retschgallas, I believe, is the firm, which I thought did an excellent job. Aside from the normal things of strategic planning, goals of quality water, and customer service, one of the major elements was the endorsement by the board and the executive director of partnering with other utilities, the other utilities being the city of Jacksonville and Marine Corps-based Camp Lejeune, in terms of avoiding duplication of facilities and wherever possible, working out agreements where, to avoid duplication of facilities to ensure the lowest possible cost to the utility customer. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Lozaro?
Thank you, Mayor. I also had the honor to attend the National League of Cities, not only representing Jacksonville, but the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Had meetings with Senator Burr, Senator Tillis, and I did thank him then for their help with the census issue, and, you know, they, they gave us a tremendous amount of help up there. And obviously, hopefully, we'll, we'll get some benefits from that. Also was able to attend training on preemption, broadband, infrastructure, and that's a piece that you will hear quite a bit more in the future about. Broadband is something that is not a luxury anymore, but it's a utility. And we, we know that leadership has to be involved in terms of bridging the gap. We have almost 700,000 people that don't have minimum, even the basic minimum service. And we know the importance of it when it comes to healthcare, education, economic development. So we're going to be working on some legislative agendas regarding that. Municipal government doesn't want to be in the broadband business, but we would like the opportunity to be able to enter into private-public partnerships, being that we are very good at, at implementing infrastructure. So there's some opportunities there. So that's something that we'll be talking quite about, quite a bit more about in the coming months as we move forward.
Like you say, the broadband issue is one that, like you say, used to be a luxury, but now it is a necessity. I mean, how do we get, it's like people talk that conversation about cell phones. How did we ever exist without, you know? We did, but we could never go back to that. But the technology keeps changing and getting better and better, and more people are being rolled into the technological loop.
And Mayor, as you know, the city of Jacksonville has been very proactive in that endeavor.
Yes.
And Richard, you can talk about that, but when we do a sewer, sewer project or rehabilitation project, we're putting in, is it dark conduit or dark fiber, so that those resources are being put in the ground, and other municipal governments are doing the same thing. So we've been very proactive in this measure, but we don't have the opportunity to enter into a public-private partnership, because we're not allowed to. And those are the efforts that, that we're seeking to change, because there's quite a bit of opportunity there that could help the basic residents out in terms of having basic service. And, you know, telemed, that's a, you know, getting healthcare over the internet is becoming a big deal, and there's people that are going to need these sort of services along with the other things that we rely upon.
Anyway. Thank you. That's, that's the long short of it. Thank you.
Again, if you don't mind, with two One City moments. The first has to do with Harmony, and the second has to do with the broadband system that you were just talking about, sir, celebrating 12 years. Obviously, this is neither kind of those.
Is that broadband?
I confuse Glenn, so.
We are running those pipes kind of close together, right?
They really were. Harmony stands for Helping All Reach More Options. Helping All Reach More Options. Through new, through new youth givers, this is a program designed to teach the power of philanthropy to our youth. Sponsored with a grant from the Onslow Caring Community Foundation and operated by Community Engagement, Lily's Department, the program teaches young people how to reach consensus about issues they want to engage in, and then make decisions on making financial awards to assist the program. As you will notice, this past week, we had $3,000 that were awarded to five projects. White Oak Green Team received an award, the Jacksonville Friends of the Library an award, NAB Vets Easter North Carolina Chapter, Aspire Youth Program, and New Life Family Worship Center. The Harmony program was begun in 2009. It has inspired more than 350 youth to learn about the power of caring for others and giving. Congratulations to the Jacksonville Harmony members, our own department, Community Engagement, especially Pamela Trafton, our coordinator, working with Lily and Tracy on this amazing event. And again, this was very well received. It was accommodated across the street at the youth center. Now, the second moment is going to be G-10. The Jacksonville Onslow Government Television Channel, commonly referred to as G-10, is now celebrating its 12th year of broadcasting. It not only broadcasts, but it does things like streaming, which I have no idea what that means, Mayor, but others do. It provides quality program to tell the story of our community. Formed as a result of a partnership with Onslow County, the channel is operated by the city and the county. It is operated primarily, though, with your media staff. I know that they're busy right now, but if all of the members of the staff will simply put the controls on hold and come out here into the chamber, we'd like to recognize you. So ladies and gentlemen, would you please come into the chamber?
It's a one-man show.
Not only what they're going to do, like John said, one at a time, or whether that was Kevin representing the whole group.
Okay. We're trying to find.
But just for the record, we have Kevi, Kevin, we have Alan Covey, we have Lisa Miller, we have Kimberly Tillman, and of course, Glenn Hargit. So very, very well done. In addition to that, here are some things we'd like to mention to the community. The budget sessions will begin on April 3rd. So your next workshop, which will begin at 5:00 in meeting rooms A and B, will be the kickoff for our budget session. Remind the public that your fiscal year is July 1 through June 30. By state law, you're required to have your budget adopted no later than June the 30th. So through April and May and into June, we'll be having almost weekly meetings to work on your budget schedule and eventually to your adoption. Mr. Thomas mentioned that two of our supervisors are going to be retiring the end of this month. Johnny Stiltner, former major in the Marine Corps, has spent decades with us, has done an outstanding job. As Mr. Thomas mentioned, his favorite pastime is filling potholes and paving streets and fixing drainage problems. And Johnny has done a great job. He will be missed. The other staff member, of course, is Pete Dever. Pete Dever never met a piece of equipment he did not want to buy. And you know that over the budgets that Pete has helped us with, we have significantly improved the level of the quality of our equipment, and also the professional level of the water and wastewater and utility line staff. Pete is also going to be missed. He leaves behind, both of these gentlemen leave behind, some outstanding people who will be there to continue their service. But I would especially want to recognize Pete and Johnny tonight, and even though they're not here, please join me in a round of applause. Several weeks ago, Chief Yonera brought to you the possibility of a $20,000 grant from the North Carolina Blue Cross Blue Shield and one other agency. Chief called me earlier this week and said that he thought it would be good if we met with the county about possibly filing a joint application. And I'm pleased to tell you that today, he did have that meeting, and he and the county came to an agreement on your behalf that we will file a joint grant application, a joint grant application that will further help you and the county address the issues of opioid addiction. So Chief, thank you, well done. Appreciate that. And then lastly, I would like to always thank you, Mayor, and the members of council. The hours that you spend leading this community are far greater than most people realize. The things that you do on a daily basis, answering citizen calls that you refer to us, we try to act on those very quickly. A good example is Mr. Warden sent an email this morning talking about some potholes that he believed came from Connecticut during the winter that had found their home over on White Street. So we're working to accommodate moving those potholes back to Connecticut or at least someplace outside the city. But again, thank you for your constant leadership and service. John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just take a moment to thank the mayor and council for those kind remarks. I'm not sure all those photos out of archives were necessary, but again, thank you for the remarks. Even though I'm a one lawyer shop, as you know, you never get anything accomplished in life, being alone, is through working with Richard, Ron, Carmen, Glenn, CMO staff, all the department directors, and all of the city staff, that we've been able, and of course, the mayor and council, to do so many wonderful things during those number of years that you referred to. I want to leave you with this thought. We've had several different custodians kind of filling in for someone, and a gentleman came in the other day, and he picked up my trash can, and I said, "Thank you, sir." I said, "No problem, sir, it's just all being part of the team." He said, "You know what team means?" I said, "No, sir, maybe I don't know what team means." And he said to me, "It means together, everyone accomplishes more. Team, remember that." And thank you again for the opportunity to serve you and the citizens of this fine city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.